Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our servicemen and women who are at home or overseas serving for us, and our veterans and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Counselor Cologne, please.
Here.
Counselor Condon.
Yeah.
Counselor Crowe?
Here.
Counselor Linehan?
Here.
Counselor McDonald?
Here.
Counselor O'Malley?
Here.
Counselor Sika?
Here.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yeah.
Counselor Winslow?
Counselor Winslow here.
Counselor Spatafora?
Yeah.
Counselor President Murphy?
Here. Before we actually get into the agenda, I'd like to take a moment, under achievements and announcements, to actually thank outgoing President Craig Spatafora for all his hard work over the past year 2022. For those of you who have never sat in this seat, it is a tremendous amount of work over and above that is your role as a city councilor. It really takes an inordinate amount of time and fortitude to do the job and do it well. Counselor Spatafora came into this job last January after we had really been remote from almost two years with COVID. And he had to bring us all back, I don't want to say kind of into the fold, in person, and deal with, you know, how we work together once again as a group collaboratively and respectfully. He did that, along with having new councilors, that he had to, you know, kind of teach and show what was going on and how they should, they should work within the city. Uh, sorry. Uh, how they should, how they should work within the city, and help them through becoming a new counselor and know what the ropes are, who to go to for answers, and how to get things done. We want to thank him for his guidance, for his leadership, and for always being there to answer the phone for us when we needed it. So Counselor Spatafora, I hope I can fill your shoes this year. It's always a pleasure working with you. We've been together for, well, this will be our 14th year serving together, so I know that as incoming president, I can continue to rely on you, as I did as my president, to help me through 2023. So with that, I'd like to thank you for your service.
Appreciate it, thank you.
That was the wave, that was the wave. Yes, oh, I'm sorry, yes, we have some comments. Counselor Linehan first? Oh, I'm sorry, oh, oh, they got them, they didn't get them right. Okay, Counselor Seminelli.
Thank you, Madam.
Oh, no. Hold on. Somehow this didn't get changed. Wait a minute, O'Malley, Seminelli. No, you're, you're good, you should be good. You should be good. Try it now.
Try it now. Okay, well, good. Yeah, Madam President, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to outgoing President Spatafora. You know, for me coming back after, you know, being out for quite a while, you know, it was new to me, and, you know, I want to thank the council for having the patience and the time when I did need, you know, answers and, you know, different types of protocol. And he took the time out to take my phone calls and send me in the right direction. And I know he's very busy with his family and his job, and I, you know, I take my hat off to him because it's not easy seeing him work the way he works. So I just want to say thank you to Counselor Spatafora, and thanks for making my first year coming back a good one. Thank you.
Folks, just so that there's no confusion tonight, I am going to just do a test of this because we did have all of these names changed, but it seems, I'm actually highlighting Counselor Linehan's second, the second seat, but yet it's not picking you up, it's picking up since Counselor Seminelli in the third seat. So I'm just going to go through a quick test. Okay, Counselor Cologne Hayes? Here. Counselor Peg Crowe?
Here.
Counselor McDonald?
Here.
Counselor Spatafora?
Here.
Counselor Sika?
Here.
Counselor O'Ma- hold on a second, let me get these off for a second. Oh, is that, did you just press your button? No, okay, okay. Counselor O'Malley? Okay. Counselor Condon?
That came on as me.
All right. Could someone, please, Lisa, could you please call IT and get them down here ASAP? Is this? Something's, yeah, something, it's this side, yeah. Something's definitely off. Huh. Who's lit up now? Because now I came on.
I want the old ones back.
Yeah, but even, but that's, but even. Counselor?
Well, not enough technology.
Doesn't make any sense at all.
Well, I don't understand the technology.
Right, because see, Counselor Seminelli's on, yeah.
Really, you better shut me off, I'll shake this thing over.
Okay. Let's see. I am going to see if we can, I think we can move forward with some of the agenda. But before we get into anything complicated, we will make sure that this is, this is fixed. Next order of business. Do we have any public comment?
We do.
Okay, is it letters or is it?
No, we have one person in the audience that signed in for public.
Okay, Shaleen, okay. So, Shaleen, let me, this title, let me see if I can, if you come up to the podium and make sure that we can hear you, we will continue.
Testing?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so on.
Okay. May I begin?
Yes, you may begin.
Counselor President Murphy, thank you for the opportunity to make a brief comment today. My name is Shaleen Title, I live on Bowers Avenue in Ward Five. As a Malden resident, I served, along with some of you, on the Ad-Hoc Cannabis Review Committee that provided recommendations to this council on the initial cannabis regulations. I also served on the State Cannabis Control Commission, where I focused on racial and social equity, and have since authored several academic papers on equitable regulations of cannabis. I was asked by benevolent botanicals to take a look at Malden's status as a host community, which is responsible under state law to promote and encourage equity applicants. This is not a new issue. Malden's Cannabis Licensing and Enforcement Commission has intentionally approved not just benevolent botanicals, but multiple majority-owned social equity applicants, but none have been able to move forward due to significant restrictions put in place, unfortunately, by this council. I am one of many Malden residents that has raised concerns that the excessive restrictions in place would prevent social equity applicants from moving forward, especially when this council rejected our ad hoc committee's recommendation of a residential buffer zone of 50 feet, and instead expanded it to make it much more difficult to find a suitable property. The state's guidance for municipalities on equitable cannabis regulations, which I authored as a member of the Cannabis Control Commission, specifically cautions municipalities against enacting buffer zones arbitrarily in this way. On top of that, our city has trapped every majority-owned social equity applicant in a circle of contradictory administrative requirements, so that none has been able to move forward in more than five years. If it wasn't clear before, it was made clear by the bill signed into law this summer that cities cannot set up rules so restrictive that social equity applicants are prevented from operating. I understand that you are reconsidering an amendment tonight to provide at least one theoretical path forward for these applicants, which is a good step, and there are other changes you need to be making to be compliant with state law. During that process, I'm happy to remain available as a resource to each of you, given that the city cannot legally continue to prevent social equity applicants from operating. Finally, after having participated in this process as a Malden resident for more than five years, I'm encouraged by the sensible decisions already in place. First, by the recommendation by our ad hoc committee, which included a diverse group of experts knowledgeable on public health, business licensing, and social equity, and it should, this council should give deference to the Cannabis Licensing and Enforcement Commission, which includes the police chief and building inspector, who are uniquely experienced and positioned to make informed decisions on location questions. Either way, it is not too late for the city and this council to do the right thing, both legally and morally, and change the process to allow social equity applicants to move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Title. Next order of business, please. Next order of business, Paper 1-23, approval of minutes, minutes from the meeting of December 20th, 2022. On, sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. On Counselor Sika's motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. You need to sit here? All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess so that we can get the, the microphones, the audio, working properly. Thank you. Like if you click on, if you click on Counselor Linehan, who's the second from the end, Counselor Seminelli comes on.
That's okay, we can figure it out, so.
I'm going to buy one. It's like three or four.
I'm surprised this thing is still alive.
I mean, I believe we're in the [inaudible].
We've fixed. Council will come to order and come out of recess. Okay. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the patience. We have, uh. I've got it somewhere. I lost it. Okay. All right. And we shall continue. Roll call, guess, number seven, okay. The clerk will read the next order of business, please. Paper 2-23, Counsel President Murphy will announce the appointments of the council committees. Okay. Ms. Cagno's going to come up and pass them out, but I do have a few words. I want to start by thanking my colleagues for your confidence in choosing me to lead this distinguished body for 2023. I'm honored to have this opportunity. As I thought about what I wanted my legacy as a council president to be, I kept coming back to one word: focus. This is a vibrant and busy city. Our role as a legislative body is an important one, yet one that we are expected to fulfill while working full-time jobs or otherwise leading busy lives. Therefore, it requires us to really focus on those elements where we can have the greatest impact, that fit within our mission, and do so in the most efficient way possible. I truly believe that focus plus goals will equal results. It is in that spirit that I will share with you my 2023 committee assignments and some associated thoughts. You'll first notice that I have organized the committee listings into three separate categories that recognize we have committees that vary vastly in differences in their purpose. The first one is standing committees. Those are required by our city council rules, they exist yet a year and have for many years. Ad hoc committees are those created by either the city council or the mayor with a specific purpose in mind. These generally aren't permanent committees, but rather exist until the end goal is accomplished. Ordinance-driven committees are the third category, and those are created by our ordinances and have city council representation, but are not entirely made up of city councilors. In making these committee assignments, I started by consolidating some ad hoc committees into existing standing committees. As an example, we have a Public Works Standing Committee, as well as a Parks and Recreation Ad hoc Committee, a Parks and Restoration Maintenance Committee, and a Community Forest Ad hoc Committee. Putting these three ad hoc committees under the Standing Committee, Public Works, which is responsible, responsible for parks, as well as a number of other things, will help consolidate our focus and allow fewer conflicts in reaching quorum, meeting quorums. Where I saw similar opportunities to streamline our organization, I've done that. I've had many conversations with fellow councilors over the past weeks and have worked to balance their strengths, interests, and experience with the committee assignments to provide thoughtful and diverse discussion. From a macro perspective as a council president, I start the year with three goals that, if accomplished, would leave a lasting legacy on our city for years to come. The first one is to deliver a charter and ordinance reform package to modernize and otherwise clean up our dated structure. The second one is to identify actionable steps from the Financial Strategic Planning Committee that will address those financial topics that will make or break our city in years to come. And the third one is to pass a set of city council rules that incorporate important changes in the use of technology for meetings and establishes operating principles that ensure we always conduct the people's business with respect. Following that lead, I'm going to ask the chair of each committee to share with our clerke committees anywhere from one to five goals, priorities, initiatives, whatever you like to call them, for the upcoming year. I recognize that each committee is addressing different topics with vastly different scope, so I will leave it to the chair to decide the right number of goals. I ask that you send those lists to Lisa by the end of the day Thursday, the 12th, so that she can put them together, and we can share them at our council meeting on January 17th. I know this is a new concept, but I strongly believe doing so will help keep us focused when things get busy and other priorities come calling. A couple of examples come to mind based upon conversations I've had. Counselor Crowe, over the years, has shared her desire to make sure we have appropriate resources and policies in place to ensure that the smaller, but no less important cemeteries in the city get the attention they deserve. This could be a priority of the cemetery committee. Similarly, Counselor McDonald recently shared his desire as a member of the Personnel and Appointment Committee to review our outreach efforts, to ensure we are doing all we can to attract and recruit members for both city positions, boards, and commissions that truly represent the diversity of our community. Each of these, as accomplished goals, would be worthy of our time and tangible in their impact. Finally, you might notice that last year's age-friendly committee and the Intercultural Competency and Awareness Committee are not on the list. After discussion with councilors that chair or sit on these committees, it was apparent that the framework is not working as anticipated. We agreed that we should put the committees on hold for a moment to discuss the best way to move forward with these initiatives. With that all being said, our city clerk will read the list of committees, and if her voice leaves her, because she has laryngitis, I will pick up where she left, where she leaves off.
Thank you. Yes, my husband had a very pleasurable weekend without me being able to speak for 48 hours straight. City Council Committees 2023. Finance Committee, councilors McDonald, Chair, Condon, Vice Chair, O'Malley, Cologne Hayes, Seminelli, Linehan. Personnel and Appointments Committee, councilors Linehan, Chair, Seminelli, Vice Chair, McDonald, Condon, Sika. License Committee, councilors Sika, Chair, Seminelli, Vice Chair, Condon, Cologne Hayes, O'Malley. Public Works Committee, councilors Seminelli, Chair, Winslow, Vice Chair, O'Malley. Rules and Ordinance Committee, councilors Crowe, Chair, Linehan, Vice Chair, Sika, Spatafora, Winslow. Public Safety Committee, councilors Crowe, Chair, Sika, Vice Chair, Seminelli. Public Property Committee, councilors Cologne Hayes, Chair, Spatafora, Vice, Condon. Cemetery Committee, councilors Winslow, Chair, Crowe, Vice Chair, Cologne Hayes. Ad hoc Committees, Future of Maplewood Square Committee, councilors Winslow, Chair, McDonald, Vice, Murphy, Michelle Romero, ex officio. Resident Members, Ward Five Seat is Open, Ward Six, Barbara Schuvi, Ward Six, also Naomi Khan. Business Representatives, Bonita McAllister and Gabrielle Tobrio. Charter Review, Counselor Spatafora, Chair, Linehan, Vice, Winslow, Karen Anderson, Ron Hogan, ex officio members. Long-Term Financial Planning and Strategy, councilors Spatafora, Chair, McDonald, Vice, Murphy, Ron Hogan, and Chuck Ranigan, ex officio members. Committee Technology Policy, Counselor Linehan, Chair, Cologne Hayes, Vice, O'Malley. Waterfront Access, councilors Winslow, Chair, Crowe, Vice, O'Malley, and the Harbor Master or Assistant to the Harbor Master. Resiliency and Sustainability, councilors Winslow, Chair, O'Malley, Vice Chair, Crowe, McDonald, Sika. Ex officio Committees, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Seminelli, Community Fund, Murphy, Complete Streets, Winslow, Energy Efficiency, McDonald, Library Trustee, Murphy, Malden River Works, Winslow. Master Steering Planning Committee, Cologne Hayes and Linehan. Problems Property Committee, Counselor Crowe. Sign Design, councilors Murphy and Spatafora. Site Plan Review, RIO, Councils Murphy and O'Malley. Site Plan Review for Malden River, Counselor Winslow, Chair, Crowe, and O'Malley. Site Plan for Rose Quarry, Counselor Sika and Spatafora.
Thank you. You got through it.
So I did.
Next order of business, please.
Paper 3-23, Petition, Class Two License for Malden Auto Brokers of 225 Eastern Avenue, Renewal 20 Cars. Paper 4-23, Petition, Class Two License for Frank's Auto Sales of 189 Highland Avenue, Renewal Four Cars.
One, oh, sorry.
Sorry, we have four. Paper 5-23, Petition, Class Two License for Uni Auto Center, Inc. of 369 Salem Street, Renewal 20 Cars. Paper 6-23, Petition, Livery License for Linda Delacorno, Doing Business as Ruby Lynn Transportation, LLC. as Ruby Lynn Transportation LLC of 259 Mountain Avenue, renewal one, livery license.
On Councilor Sika's motion to refer the petitions to license, seconded by Councilor Seminelli, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The petitions are referred. Next order of business, please.
Paper seven dash twenty-three, Be it hereby ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden be amended by updating Title II, Chapter 24, Section 020, Library Salary Schedule.
On Councilor McDonald's motion to refer to finance, seconded by Councilor Spatafora, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Paper has been...
Is that going to be a joint finance?
Oh, is that a joint? Oh, okay. All right. We can do a joint finance, yeah. All right, yeah, we'll do a joint finance and ordinance, okay. Let me, let's rerun, let's rerun that. On Councilor McDonald's motion to refer to finance and Councilor Crowe's motion to refer to ordinance, to be a joint meeting, okay, they each second the other's referral. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The paper is referred to a joint finance ordinance meeting.
Paper seven, we'll do the same for paper eight?
Yes.
Paper eight dash twenty-three, Order that the sum of $60,678.74 is transferred from Salary Reserve Account 00109965110 to Library Salaries Account Number 0010610-5110.
This does not go to joint finance. This just goes to finance, because the first one goes to a joint finance. Once it comes out of, once it gets approved out of the joint finance and ordinance committee, then the actual financial paper will have to go to specifically finance. No, it's dual papers, but it still has to come out. That paper will go directly to...
Yeah, I know, I'm just...
Yeah, I think it just goes to finance, seriously. Pardon me? Councilor Crowe, let me put you on. Let's just have a little discussion about this for a minute. Yes?
I think that when we have done some joint, first finance does their piece, and then we sort of have a joint meeting, so, together, so it all sort of happens at the same time, but finance does theirs, and then we do a joint.
Right, so I think this just goes, this just goes to finance.
Yes.
It does, okay. Yes. Yes. So, on Councilor McDonald's motion to refer to the finance committee, seconded by Councilor Condon, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The paper is referred to finance. Next order of business, please.
Paper nine dash twenty-three, Resolve, that the Malden City Council and the Personnel and Appointments Committee will work with the City Human Resources Director to develop best practices and timelines for the recruiting and interview process for open staff appointments. This will help ensure a highly qualified and diverse candidate pool, a timely, transparent, and fair consideration for applicants, and opportunities for succession planning.
Councilor McDonald for the paper, or the resolve?
Thank you, and I worked hard to make this as concise and focused a resolve as possible. This came out of conversations in the Personnel and Appointments Committee in the last, the last part of the year, and we had to make a number of appointments that came up very successfully, but realized that, you know, we weren't getting the kind of applicant pool that we would really hope for in an open search, just in a general way, and that we want to make sure that we're following best practices. Some of that has to do with recruitment and advertising, which has been done both through our HR department as well as through the mayor's office. We want to make sure that that's consistent and doesn't just rest on any one position, but it also has to do with the way that we schedule interviews. You know, often we'll meet and we'll decide things, and then we have to reach out to candidates, and then, you know, it just manages to slow down the process quite a lot, whereas if we kind of set up a more standard schedule in advance, it might allow us to get people in the door sooner. In both of the appointment processes that we went through, we did have candidates withdraw because we were taking so long to consider them and get them, get their interviews on the calendar. So this is just a way to develop some guidelines, very, I give my congratulations to Councilor Linehan, who will be the Chair of Personnel Appointments, and I think, you know, so I sort of defer to you on this going forward, but I just think, because this is council work, but we're also relying on the work of city staff, I think it'd be very helpful to just have some written guidelines and practices that we know we can depend on that will help smooth and improve our appointments process when those things come up.
Councilor Linehan?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilor McDonald, for this. I was hoping to be added as a co-sponsor, and also just wanted to reiterate my support and commitment to seeing this through. I know you and I and several others of the committee that were involved in the recent interviews kind of had this great conversation with the HR director about, you know, public sector hiring, which I do a lot of in my day job, it's very challenging, the recruitment is different than the private sector, you have to respect sort of the, a little bit of the privacy, because once that process becomes public, it's very, very public. But within those constraints, kind of what can we do to really adopt best practices but even go above and beyond in terms of our recruitment diversifying the applicant pool? So I think this is a fabulous resolve. I'm definitely committed to getting some of these new practices in place, and I would look forward to working on it with you and the committee.
And she has her first goal. Next, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Motion to approve the resolve. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is, the resolve is approved. Okay, next order of business.
Paper ten dash twenty-three, Motion for reconsideration. On the date of December 21, 2022, prior to the deadline of 9:18 PM, per the previous evening's adjournment of the city council meeting, both councilors Murphy and Crowe independently moved for reconsideration of their votes on Paper 315-22, Section 12.12.190.a and 12.12.190.b, only regarding dimensional controls and parking requirements.
Councilor Crowe for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President, and if, the last time we were all here together, there was when we discussed 315 was taken from the table, and it was, got a little, I don't know, dicey, confusing at the end on sort of how, if we were doing it, doing it properly, because we had, as the planning board did, had it sort of in three different sections. Two were really administrative in nature, and one was really the meat and potatoes of the, of the whole paper. And because of that, and I think at the end of the meeting, Councilor Winslow, we had sort of asked if it was sort of properly separated, and that sort of started a buzz, and I had said it to Alicia McNeil, our Assistant City Solicitor, who was here that night, that I was, you know, we needed to look into those, and so I might have to reconsider my vote, and obviously, Councilor Murphy had the same sort of, sort of thought process. But the, after a little investigation, that the paper was properly separated, because it is in our rules that it can be separated into different, into different sections. So the, so I'm not sure if we take a motion on the reconsideration of those two pieces. And then, really, the third part is, again, sort of the meat and potatoes was the, the section that dealt with buffer zones. And because on that third piece, the disapproval failed, there was no action taken at that, at that night, and we do need to take action, so I actually would like to make a motion to approve the proposal as, approve the, the paper as proposed, for that third section only.
Let us start by, oh, Councilor O'Malley.
I think that, starting the year off, I was talking to Council President Murphy, and I think starting the year off with a fight like this is probably not the best way to start the year. I would ask that we try to compromise. The first two portions of the paper, I don't think were properly acted upon to even be up for reconsideration. There's a question of whether or not there was a motion to enroll versus a motion to approve. I think that there's a way that we can allow the first two to go forward and probably not act upon the third portion. I think that would be a great compromise. We're at a stalemate without having to get into a giant fight in the first meeting, but that's just my thought.
Counselor Seminelli.
Yeah, I just had a point of... It's okay. I had missed a couple of meetings before the holiday due to my wounded neck, so I don't know if I missed some of these discussions or not, so I was just wondering when, because I'm, I'm not remembering if I was part of that discussion or not, and I don't think I was. So I'd just like to maybe have a little more clarification on what we're voting on, if that's okay, when you guys are done discussing the topic.
Counselor Sika and then Councilor Crowe.
Really quickly, should we be voting on the motion to reconsider this paper before we actually go into all this stuff? Okay. So I make a motion if Councilor Crowe hasn't already, or I'll second Councilor Crowe's motion to reconsider Paper 315.
Okay. Clerk, if you would call the roll on that, please. Yes, Councilor McDonald. Sorry.
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify this, so the, the motion for reconsideration that's on the agenda is for the two sections, 1212.190a and 1212.190b, regarding dimensional controls and parking requirements. So this, this motion to reconsider is, reconsider is only in relation to those two sections, right?
Correct. Those two. And it was basically predicated upon whether or not they were, the reconsideration was predicated upon whether or not the papers were separated properly, and after doing a lot of research, they were separated.
They were separated.
They were separated properly.
But we're going to revote it anyways.
We have to act on something, yeah.
Yes. Okay. Let's take this, Councilor Condon, you are next.
Yes. Are you withdrawing the reconsideration? Is that the way you're going to do it? Because it's proper, the way it was done? If we properly voted it, one and two, I don't know if you would like to withdraw the reconsideration or not. Maybe you can clarify that for me, Councilor Crowe.
Councilor Crowe, one moment, please. And then Councilor Linehan, I know you're waiting to speak. If it's a point of order, yes. One second. Councilor Sika.
So I guess my question would be, if we, if Councilor Crowe was to withdraw her reconsideration, then those go forward, but Councilor O'Malley seems to still have a problem with the way that we voted for them, the last two, so maybe we should vote on the reconsideration and then revote on both of those to enroll, because it sounds like he thinks we didn't do it properly, so if that's the case, then let's do it properly this evening and make him, entertain her motion to reconsider, and then we can revote on those two parts with a motion to enroll both of them. I don't know if we should take an opinion from the city solicitor's office, or, but I think, if there's still confusion about this particular paper, then I think the best way isn't to withdraw the reconsideration vote, I think we should vote on it and then bring those back up, vote on them again with a motion to enroll both of those, you know, two different point, A and B. Thank you.
Just for clarification, for Counselor Seminelli, those two papers that we're discussing are just administrative in nature. There's something the planning board is basically already doing, it just basically, what's the word you used? Codifies, it just codifies what was done. There does seem to be some issue as to whether the correct wording was used in the approval process last, two weeks ago, whether we voted to approve or we voted to enroll. It should have been voted to enroll. Yes. Yes. So, Councilor Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. So I was just looking for clarification on the motion to reconsider. I'm seeing two different names for the items when I look at it in Granicus, so the paper is just one paper number, and it's back on the table because of what we're doing right now, correct? If you look it up, that's, it doesn't say we did anything in December, because we're back to square one, basically, potentially, right now. So if you look at the paper, it's still just 315-22, there's no A, B, C. That's the zoning code section that we were looking at within that paper. So I'm, I'm not looking to reopen this and then combine it and then torpedo the whole thing, obviously, this is my paper, I would like to have seen it pass, but I'm concerned, and I don't remember us affirmatively making a vote to separate it into three sections, so therefore, like, I'm looking at Councilor Crowe's email, which I appreciate, I think she actually worded it the right way, which is to list the sections of zoning that pertain to what we voted on, which is, the first one is existing buildings, or no, I have that backwards, the first one is new buildings, the second one is regulation of existing, and then that third one, or C, would be the buffer which we decided not to move forward with. So I'm just, I want clarity on exactly what we're doing, since it is just one paper that's listed, and it's kind of hard to follow which section is which, since that we didn't, I don't remember actually breaking it out into three, so are we saying we de facto separated it by voting them separately?
We actually, I'm going to have our city solicitor come up, there's actually a section in Robert Rules that basically states, and I'm going to let him do it, because I don't want to...
I think it's in our rules as well.
Yeah.
In our rules as well.
I did see that.
That you can separate papers, different nature, without a vote.
Without a vote, okay, that's what I'm asking, does the, does the separate vote that we took constitute a separation?
Good evenings, here's to me from the city solicitor's office. So I did research this question, I looked at Robert's Rules, there's a section called 27, which is entitled Division of a Question, and it provides that there are certain motions which must be divided on the demand of a single member, in which case, a formal motion to divide is not used. I wasn't here at the last meeting at which these, these votes were taken, but my understanding was there were three separate votes taken to approve the separate portions of the, the two ordinance sections, and it appears that since each, each portion of the paper can be separated and distinctly voted upon, there's no motion to divide them that's required under Robert's Rules. And so, my understanding is that they were properly divided at the last meeting when they were voted upon separately.
And so, when we refer to them by their zoning code, is that, is that adequate? I just don't, I don't want us to have to redo this again, kind of to Councilor O'Malley's point, too, I want to make sure we're actually taking this up in the way that's...
Yeah, I believe the way, the way you voted on them, was sort of, the division wasn't corresponding to the recommendation of the planning board, and the way the planning board recommendation was that there was first approval of a proposed amendment, Section 12.12.1.1.9a, and that was, I believe, approved, and then, and then there was a second recommendation to approve Section 12.12.190b, but only regarding dimensional controls and parking requirements. And I believe that was approved separately by vote, and then I believe the third thing, which was... And then I believe the third thing, which was the same section but only regarding buffer zones, which is, of course, a separate topic—
Right.
That was, I guess, inconclusive. It was five, four, and five against, so it seems like that was the only thing that seems to be unclear to me, at least based on my understanding of the recommendations of the planning board and my understanding of what happened, what the votes were last time.
Okay. I think that answers my question. I see other lights, so I'll defer. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Malley. And then Counselor Winslow.
So again, I think that my appeal is to compromise, and that, you know, if we—if I wanted to, or if we wanted to be sticklers, if the motion, which I believe is what was made at the last meeting, was to approve the ordinances or approve the recommendation and not ordain—
Enroll.
Enroll, enroll. Then one could view the action on the first two papers as negative, and that being barred for two years. One could view it that way. I think that as a point of compromise, I think that there's a way, as a body, we can move forward the first two sections of the paper and re-vote it the way that it probably should have been voted and not push that topic. But I wouldn't be able to take that step if immediately after that, there's going to be a motion to enroll the third portion with the intent of making that fail and then triggering a two-year ban. I think that there's an opportunity to compromise. I think it's a way to start this year different than the last, and that's all I would appeal to the council for. Thank you.
Counselor Winslow. One second, Counselor Winslow. Yes. Whoops. Yes. You're good to go.
Yeah, no, I pointed out at last meeting just the confusion, because I don't remember anybody—not only did we not make a motion to separate, I don't even remember anybody making a demand to separate. We just made an assumption. So I think that's, you know, however it turns out, we were acting that way. But if that is what the legal interpretation is, that means that there were three separate things. You know, two of them we may have acted on, a third we did not act on, which means it just by Robert's Rules, it's tabled. And that is not properly before us tonight, because it's not in the agenda. So I don't think we can act on the third thing, because it's not—I mean, you can't have it both ways. You can't say we separated it and then put it together when you're—you know, it's not properly before us. So that would be my point, is that if that's what we did last time, is separate them into three things, then if we're taking some other actions, that third thing has to be properly before us. And I don't—it's not on our agenda tonight, so. So, you know, we can't have it both ways. We can't have it separated last time and then ignore it for this time. So that would be my point. If that's the interpretation, that we kind of de facto followed that provision that let us separate things out, then the result was that we did not act on that third piece, and that means it's tabled, and it's not on our agenda tonight to act on. So that would be my point. Thank you.
Okay. I'm just going—it—we did separate it. Just to clarify the record, okay? This is the conversation that took place. Counselor Seega, at one minute—yeah, one hour and 15 minutes and 43 seconds into the meeting during December 20th states, "This paper, 315-22, actually has three moving parts to it. So if we vote on this paper this evening, we are going to be voting for the three separate things. Because there were three recommendations that came out of the planning board meeting for this particular paper, one has to do with existing buildings, one has to do with new buildings, and one has to do with the buffer zones. So I just want to be clear that if we do vote on this this evening, everyone knows that they're going to be voting three different times, but three different things on this particular paper. One hour and 20 minutes and 22 seconds into the meeting, Counselor Crowe seconded Counselor Seega's demand by confirming and explaining how the paper deals with three different subjects in one motion. One hour and 51 minutes and 13 seconds into the meeting, President Spatafor confirmed with the full city council that everyone was in agreement that the questions were going to be voted individually. No one objected. He then had Clerk Lucy read each question one at a time. So it does sound like we separated them, you know? That demand was made. Now, the question becomes, Counselor Winslow, I guess, right now, is whether or not you feel this paper is before us, the third pa— and that's what you're saying, the third paper, you do not feel is before us because it's not listed, or it's—315 is listed on the agenda in totality.
So I guess—I think we're playing—to me, it's like—
Hold on a second, Counselor Winslow. There you go.
I think, to me, if we separated them out last time, and there—and then this paper here is talking about two parts that were separated, I mean, we separated them. So that third part has to be noted in our agenda to be acted on. We separated it. We can't have it both ways. We can't say we separated them, and then—for this purpose, we're putting them back together. So we separated them. So it has to be handled in a different way. That's—you can't have it both ways. You know, you can't have it separated when you want and then put it all back—mush it back together without it being properly on the agenda. That's, you know, we can't—we got a legal interpretation one way, that it's separate. So that's—that was my point, that if it's truly separated, and that's the interpretation we're getting, that separated paper is not properly before us. So thank you.
Counselor Seega.
Counselor Winslow, I disagree with you. The paper is properly before us, because there was no tabling motion after that particular portion of the paper failed. It was a five-five vote. We did not put it back on the table, so it's actually properly before us right now, because it's—it is a paper that's open for discussion.
Counselor Winslow, let me get—
We don't act on a paper, it gets tabled automatically.
We acted on it. It failed.
No. We didn't act on it. So we didn't take any action, and it—
Counselor—
Okay, we're not—
Madam President, could I please have Zahia come back—or Michelle Romero come up for some information?
Okay. What I just want to do right now is I want to keep the temperature up here level, please. Okay? We have different differing opinions on this, okay? It is a subject that's near and dear to the heart of many. So I just like us all to be respectful and try to keep our tone, you know, at a level that is appropriate for our body. So, okay. Would our city solicitor please return to the podium? Okay, could you push the button, Zahia, please? I gotcha. Okay, there. You're good.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not so sure I'm going to be as helpful this time, but I will—I will try. So what's the question?
So the question is, because the paper was a five-five vote, split vote, and we took it off the table, we did not vote to put it back onto the table, so it should technically be properly before us right now, because it didn't—it didn't pass. Didn't—it failed—it didn't fail, like—
Was there ever a motion explicitly to table it? To table it?
There was no—there was no action—there was no motion to table once we voted on the recommendation of the planning board, and it was a five-five split vote. So it was my understanding that because of that, we technically should have voted on something that evening, but we were all so frazzled, because everything was so confusing. Everyone was talking over each other and everything else. It got to be a little crazy, so we ended the meeting. But there should have been another motion after that that motion failed, or didn't do anything, because it was a five-five split vote. So it's—it this paper—this third portion of the paper is technically not tabled, because we never put it back on the table. It's still properly before the council.
I can't say that that's wrong, but even if it is—even if it were laid on the table, Robert's Rule, Section 17, says that for something that is laid on the table, there's no set time for taking up the matter again, and its consideration can be resumed at the will of majority, pretty much at any time.
Well, and really quick.
Okay.
This agenda actually lists Paper 315-22, ordered that MCC 12.12.198 be amended, but it doesn't say anything about the third.
It doesn't, but the, you know, the entire—
But it's—the other portion of it is not on the table portion, so it's technically not tabled if it's not on the table.
Okay.
Okay, stop, please. Let's—I have everyone lights in order.
I apologize, but it's a little confusing, so I just want to make sure.
That's fine. And let's just—I'm going to take this one at a time. I'm going to stay calm. Yes.
The only other thing I'd add is that, you know, Ms. Romero just pointed out to me that the two sections of the code, A and B, they're both listed on the agenda. So—
That's right. But Counselor Winslow's saying, because the third—the third part of this paper, 315, isn't that it's not properly before us.
The third part is actually included in Section B. The third part relates to Section B.
Okay, so it is properly before us on the agenda this evening, and we could—we could vote on it if we wanted to.
Yeah, I don't see how anybody who reads this agenda can reasonably claim that they have no notice that this matter, you know, wouldn't be discussed or anything like that.
Great, thank you. So it's properly before us if we want to re-vote on A and B, and then the third portion, which is also—
Also B.
Lies under B.
Correct.
Great, thank you. I'm also, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seega. Counselor McDonald.
You know, I appreciate that point. I would also—this last point about what's actually on the agenda, I would just note that following the listing of the section, it then says in parentheses, "only regarding dimensional controls and parking requirements." So it explicitly includes the provision—excludes the provision that we were just talking about. Yeah, but the— Right, yeah, but it's in—it's in reference to the—it's in reference to that. So, I mean, I—I—I just wonder if we could take—if we could actually split these papers, assign them separate numbers in Granicus, right? So I don't know how we—I don't know if there's a procedure to do that, if you just assign the next numbers or whatever, and then it'll be very clearly—you know, we can take action on these two things, they'll be separated in the legal system, and then very clearly at our next meeting, it will be—this remaining piece will be up, and then we can do the same things that we were planning to do right now, whatever that is.
Okay. Just that?
That's what I got.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Crowe?
Thank you, Madam President. And so the reason why—I mean, I could not reconsider a vote that didn't—that I was not on the prevailing side for, so I could only really reconsider the ones that I was on the prevailing side for. And that other one was really because—and again, remember, I was sick that time, my poor neighbors here. The, you know, it was taking action on the recommendations of the planning board. So when I had said sort of to approve the action—the recommendation of the plan board to disapprove in that field, there was really no action taken, because we just did nothing with it. But there's nothing I could put on here, because it is just really one paper, and we're not physically separating into three different papers. We were taking points of one paper, like this piece, like—not like that piece, like this word, not like that word. So that's how—why 315 is on here as the paper that is, has three sort of sections, that that's how the planning board voted in the three sections. And obviously, I thought that we would follow the way the planning board voted, separating those out, to make it really quite clear, and obviously, it really muddied up the water. But I couldn't reconsider a vote that I wasn't— I'm feeling sad.
Okay. Counselor O'Malley.
Hopefully, last. So I agree with Counselor Siminelli. For the for the third portion, my understanding is that because we did not take action on it, it—it was—as so it was placed on file, it is not—is no longer properly before us. The two that you reconsidered are potentially properly before us if we view it as though the motion to approve, rather than a motion to enroll, was not a negative action, which I'm willing to view it that way. I think the council is willing to compromise and view it that way, and get the first two finished with the compromise of let the third part die. We do not have the votes to enroll it. We do not have the votes to ordain it. I think it is a great opportunity to compromise, really.
It's only because that's what you want, Counselor O'Malley.
Counselor Seega.
But I'm—I think that—I'll be honest with you, like Counselor—Counsel President Murphy and I had a heart-to-heart, and we would like to set a different tone. I would like to set a different tone. I don't think any of our blood pressures need contentious meetings. And I'm just saying that rather than it being like all-out war, it would be nice to compromise in the first meeting. And, I mean, I think—I know we just approved the minutes. I was talking to Ron Cochran when that meeting happened, when that vote took place. I don't agree with what the minutes we just approved reflect. I don't think that is what happened. I do think it was a motion to approve, not a motion to enroll. I'm willing to take all those votes over and not push it, but let's let's try to compromise.
Yes, hold on a second. Counselor Siminelli, one second, please. There you go.
Thank you, Madam President. You know what? I think that's fair. That's fair enough. I think it's an olive branch shown. Listen, I'll be honest with you. I mean, I wasn't here for the vote, I know, but, you know, the third portion that we're talking about here, that's the part that I really, you know, was kind of on the fence with. And I see it's not even going to make the paper, so, you know, so I don't really see the big deal on what Counselor O'Malley's asking for. I mean—I mean, I think it's fair enough.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say that I'm in agreement with Counselor O'Malley and Counselor Siminelli. Thank you.
Counselor Seega for the third time.
Breathe. Is that what I have to do, is breathe?
Breathe, everybody has to breathe.
Because if Counselor O'Malley wasn't on this—if—he only wants to compromise, because this is going to benefit his cause, it's not going to benefit the opposite side, which is fine. But how long are we going to go on with this paper? No matter how long we sit up here, when we—we take it apart, we don't take it apart, we put it back together again, and it's not going to have the outcome either side wants. It's not. This paper needs eight votes. One side does not have eight votes. So no matter what, it's going to fail. You just want to compromise. I find it hysterical that you come here the first meeting, and you—you don't want to have a fight. Who says that word? Who comes here thinking they're going to have a fight?
Counselor.
I apologize, Counselor Murphy, but he only wants to compromise, because it's going to benefit the side that he want—he wants to—he wants to do. I would like to vote on this paper tonight and be done with it. Enough is enough. It's not going to change. We've been doing it for a year now. It's been a year. Let's vote on this paper.
Yes. Counselor Siminelli.
Thank you, Madam President. I—you know, I'm thinking that we are voting on this tonight. That's what I'm thinking, right? We are putting this to an end tonight. You know, I'm just saying, I just—I don't think it's that big of a deal to have a compromise on the first council meeting and see if we can, like, let bygones be bygones in the past. I don't know. I mean, it's worth a shot, you know? I just—I don't see the big deal in it, you know? I mean, we say it's got to end. A lot of—a lot of stuff's got to end to move the city forward, you know? And I don't know, my blood pressure's been up lately, my neck is wounded. I mean, I'm beat up this year, so, you know, I want to got to get some things done and work with some counselors. I got a good chance to work with a lot of good counselors this year, and we got a lot of things done, so, you know, I'm looking forward to doing that. You know, I know there's been a lot of bad blood spilt. I'm looking forward to doing that. You know, I know there's been a lot of bad blood spilt, you know, and I love you, Counselor. And, but, you know, I think it's, I think it's a good compromise, that's all. Thank you.
Just from the chair, just for clarity, the, the difference here is, with, with the compromise is basically lets the paper die, and it cannot be brought back for six months, because it's going to die, it's going to die a natural death, let's call it that way. If the paper is voted and voted down, it can't be brought back to the Council for two years. So that really is where the difference lies in this. You know, when we leave here tonight, one way or the other, the paper is put aside for a while, whether it's six months or two years is the question. So that, that's basically what we're looking at. Pardon me, Counselor.
I would, I would say that, I'd look at it in six months from now. Why wait two years? I'd rather go that way than we look at it for six months from now. Maybe we have a different view on things. I, I mean, I don't know. Like, two years is a long time to wait for something. It's new, you know, this whole cannabis thing's new to everybody.
Counselor, you're not on.
Oh, I'm sorry, maybe I was just not speaking into the mic. I'm just saying, it's, you know, the whole cannabis thing is new for everybody. So, you know, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't see being a big deal coming back in six months and taking a look at things. Things could change, you know? I mean, it's an issue.
Counselor Winslow.
So, you know, I'm looking back at the minutes. I mean, if we did separate out the papers, I guess I would make the demand tonight, just like we did last time, is to separate out these, any motion for reconsideration to, you know, A, B, and C, you know, that, that we separate those things out, just like we separated them last time, we separate them this time, so we can go ahead with the two, and then the, the third, we vote for reconsideration separately. Let's keep them separate, and we, let's, I, I think the one question I have is like, if they were separated, and there was a motion which did not pass to accept the Planning Board recommendation, and nobody called for reconsideration of that part of the motion, like, again, it's like, we, no one called for reconsideration of that part. So, that, that voted, you know, you know, so I think that's the question. But in any case, I just think that if we could separate it last time, we can separate it this time and vote on each individual thing of whether to reconsider them or not. So, that would be my, my call. Let's reconsider each part and go for it that way.
Counselor Winslow, I guess, one of the reasons that no one, Counselor Crowe or myself reconsidered the third one was because in order to reconsider, it's our understanding, you have to be on the prevailing side, and where it was a five-five tie, there really wasn't a prevailing side, and there was really no action taken, because it was basically a vote to accept the, the Planning Board's recommendation, not a vote to, to actually, you know, enroll the ordinance. And that's where, that's where the, the question really comes up. I'm sorry, Counsel, um, oh, I'm sorry, yes, Counselor Winslow.
Vote by a majority that is considered, that did not pass? I mean, isn't that, so, and nobody who prevailed called for consideration of that. I didn't call to reverse that, so I, like, to me, is it, nobody called for reconsideration of that vote, and it was separated, so I'm just, again, confused. Separated them last week, and no one called for reconsideration of that port, part, you know, win, lose, or draw. No, nobody on either side called for reconsideration of that, so I don't know how anybody can call for reconsideration. So I guess I'm, you know, if we, it is what it is. We took a vote last week, five to five, a tie, that means it doesn't move forward, and no one voted reconsider, so I think it's, you know, I don't think we can act on that again, so.
Counselor Winslow, I, I believe, and I'm going to ask Ms. Romero to come up here, just if she would, to the podium. What we voted on was just a motion to accept the committee report. We never, which was incorrect. It should have been a motion to enroll the ordinance. So because it was a motion to accept the committee report that was a tie, basically no action was taken. And that's my understanding. And I just want, just for clarity, because this is not necessarily my expertise. I would like Ms. Romero to just confirm my statement or add to it.
Yes, thank you. Happy New Year. Michelle Romero, City Planner. I was at the meeting, and my notes indicate that you did incorporate into your motion whether or not to approve or disapprove Planning Board recommendation, but part of it was approve the Planning Board recommendation and approve or enroll, and you took the vote. That was what you did on subsection A and subsection B regarding dimensional controls and parking requirements. Regarding subsection B, buffer zones, it was to approve the Planning Board recommendation and disapprove. So you were not enrolling, so you were taking that action, and you took a vote on that. And that was the five to five. I was in a meeting with the city solicitor immediately following that, and the city solicitor advised that there was no prevailing side, because it was five to five. No action was taken, so there was no opportunity to do a reconsideration. That is what, I mean, again, I'm not the city solicitor, but that's what I was advised, and that's what I heard at that meeting, and that's what was stated at that meeting by the city solicitor. It is my understanding that no action was taken on that subsection B regarding buffer zones. You attempted to disapprove it, and that failed, so no action was taken. So it's my understanding that portion of the amendment is still alive, if you will, until February 7th, before it would require a new public hearing. So it's my understanding, as one of the councils, I believe Counselor Seeca said, that it wasn't tabled, it wasn't postponed, no motion was made, so it's still properly before you. I see it listed on the agenda. I'll, you know, if I may, Counsel President Murphy.
Yes, please continue.
It's my understanding, and the way I read the, the ordinance, excuse me, your agenda, is paper number sponsor attachment, paper number sponsor attachment, paper number sponsor attachment. That's the code you use, that's the format. And when you go down the line, the third, excuse me, one, two, three, four, the fifth item is paper number 315, sponsors and attachments. So it is, it is on the agenda. It's not listed as an attachment to paper 1023, because paper 1023 has its own attachment. So if you read it, it's in the same format you always use. So for what it's worth, I, I believe that it is properly before you. Wasn't tabled, it wasn't postponed, and it is listed on your agenda, excuse me, your docket, paper 315.
We have a point of information from Counselor O'Malley.
Point of information is that the way that the agendas have been produced recently, like, for instance, a committee report would have a new paper number with the old paper number nested beneath it. This is that exact format. So 1023 is referencing the reconsideration of 31522, but only regarding dimensional controls and parking requirements. That's the understanding of the Council, at least that was my understanding. And, and that would be what a reasonable person reading this. I, I do also want to, to highlight that you did say that we did approve the recommendation, which is not a motion to enroll. So that, that would make me think that if we want to go down this route, that the first two sections were negatively acted upon, because we did not act upon them appropriately, and those are barred for two years. And that the third portion died, because as you admitted, there was no motion to table. If you don't resolve the business at the end of a meeting and you adjourn, that business is gone. We acted upon the paper. It wasn't tabled, it died. And the, as we know, we don't have the eight votes to enroll it. It's not going to get brought up within six months. I don't understand the point of wanting to feel like you're subjugating the other half of the Council. Like, again, if, if we're going to say we want to compromise, then let's compromise. Like, I, I think that it's a reasonable request. Thank you for giving me that point of information.
Thank you. Counselor, hey, did you go? Counselor Hayes and then Counselor Simonelli.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
So, I was going to ask that if Counselor O'Malley would like to make a motion for the compromise that we talked about. Are we ready to move on on this?
Yeah, we, we haven't even gotten to the reconsideration.
All right, then, let's make a motion to reconsider, like, let's, let's vote on the reconsideration. Thank you.
And Counselor Simonelli, and then Counselor McDonald, and then we're going to vote. Oh, Counselor Simonelli, hold on one second, yeah. Why don't, why aren't you coming? Nope, why aren't you?
How about no?
There you go, there you go.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. I'm, I'm confused.
Join the club.
That's all I got. I mean, I, I don't know, but, yeah, there's just a lot floating around here tonight, boy. I don't know, I guess we'll vote. But I'm, I'm confused, I don't know. Thanks, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hayes, did you still?
Yes.
Wanted to vote on the reconsideration. Let's move forward.
Counselor McDonald.
I tried to turn my light off. Let's vote for the reconsideration.
Okay. Okay. On Counselor Crowe's motion to re. Okay, just want to get the exact thing. Where are we here? On Counselor Crowe's motion to reconsider paper 315-22, seconded by Counselor Seeca, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes? Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley?
No.
Counselor Seeca?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
No.
Counselor Spatafora?
Yes.
Counselor President Murphy?
Yes. So the paper's been reconsidered, eight to three. Okay, at this point, open up the paper.
Now we talk about it?
Now we can talk about it, yes.
Let's get right back to where we were. So, what are we doing?
Counselor Crowe for the paper. Hold on one second, Counselor Crowe. Why aren't you popping up here? There you go.
So, again, we're sort of in this, this cycle of, you know, is it separated, is it not, because there is no prevailing side on the 315. So I would make a motion that we approve 315 in its totality.
Second.
Enroll.
Enroll, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, but there's a second motion on the floor?
There was, there was, she, she previously said she wanted to make a motion to approve
Enroll, use the word enroll. Change it to enroll, it's a correct.
So you have two motions on the floor, according to our city clerk, Counselor Crowe.
Originally, you said that you wanted to make a motion to approve paper 315.
As.
Be enrolled.
In its entirety.
No, this is just, this is just, this is, this is, Ms. Romero, would you come to the podium, please? This is the third part, okay, that deals with the, the buffer zones, okay? And.
No, we voted it all together.
This is the.
All together, no, no third part. One, two, three.
Oh, you said changing it, so you're rescinding, you're taking that first motion on the floor?
Yep, that, that'll. That'll remove everybody's craziness.
Oh, so in its entirety?
Yep.
So, I, I understand you're talking about paper 315-2022 as proposed. So as it was proposed by the City Council, as it was referred to Planning Board, as we had a joint public hearing, you're talking about the original paper as proposed.
As proposed, yes. That's what I was.
Okay.
That's what I understood you say, to enroll that.
Okay, so what I would like very clearly stated, Ms. Romero, is a yes vote, okay, would, would enroll all of the papers before us?
Yes.
All the parts of the paper. So previously, you divided it into three sections. It's, that paper has three different sections.
So.
But the proposal's to enroll it all as proposed.
Okay, a yes, so a yes vote in this case, okay, would update the two administrative portions of the paper, and it would move the finding or the, the approval of buffer zone from the Board of Appeals to the City Council.
Yep.
Okay, so the City Council would now be the finding authority for reducing the 75-foot buffer zone if a candidate came before us. We would be taking it away from the Board of Appeals.
For, for all the buffer zones, not just the residential buffer.
So.
And it's only for existing buildings.
Only for existing buildings, okay? They're all in there together, okay? And just to go on record, the Planning Board, their recommendation was not to do this.
Their recommendation was in favor to, that you approve the two administrative provisions, which codify the protocol we're already following.
Correct.
That's for new buildings and for existing buildings as it relates to parking and dimensional controls only. The Planning Board recommended disapproval of the part of the amendment that moves the jurisdiction for reducing buffer zones from Board of Appeal to City Council as special permit granting authority. So that was the part that they dis, recommended disapproval. They recommended approval of the two administrative parts and disapproval of that substantive amendment.
Okay, so the first two pieces are just administrative in nature and really don't have a huge impact, because you're, the Planning Board is doing, basically, we're doing that already.
The building commissioner is already doing that, yes.
The third part of the paper is really where someone said, was the meat of the paper, or somebody said the guts of the paper a little while ago. It, so if we, whoever votes yes is, I just want to make sure they know that they're voting to take the authority away from the Board of Appeals and place it with the City Council.
For buffer zones for existing buildings.
For buffer zones for existing buildings. So that would become the job of the City Council. A no vote will leave it as it is. So, at that, so City Council will become the Board of Appeals with the yes vote, and a no vote will leave it the way it exists today with the Board of Appeals being the authority that deals with it.
Well, they won't actually become Board of Appeals, just for the record. They'll use a different discretionary finding to reduce buffer zones. The Board of Appeal uses strict criteria. You, the City Council would not have to follow those criteria.
Right.
You would be able to reduce it with discretionary findings.
Okay. There are five lights flashing, okay? We're going to go through these lights, and then we're, we're going to vote it, okay? Counselor Cologne Hayes, you are first.
Thank you, Counsel President. I had just a quick question, so. Just to be clear, we're just, we're voting, I understand what we're voting on. We're voting to, on all three parts altogether, and the third part, the meat, is where we're going to vote to give the City Council the power to, for the, for the third, to vote on, instead of the Board of Appeals. I just want to be clear that we're not voting to change any buffer laws, or, just so everybody here is also clear on that as well. It's just giving us as a body, it's come, you know, the decision. Just wanted to be clear. It's not, I just wanted to be clear for everybody here that we're not voting on changing any buffer laws. It will come back to us at some point. Thank you.
Counselor O'Malley.
I just want to formally object and.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to do that. There you go. All right. Push the button again, let me if you wouldn't mind. Here I am, there you are.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I just want to formally object and, and put in a point of order that the. Yeah, I just, I just wanna formally object and put in a point of order that the only two parts that are before us are the dimensional controls and the parking requirements according to our agenda. It was my understanding, and I think a reasonable person in the public would understand, that those are the only two parts of this paper that are before us. I would warn that acting on the third part could be an open meeting law violation per our last one, even participating in that, I've determined, we've learned is a violation, so I'm going to be leaving, and you're welcome to act upon this however you see fit, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Condon.
It was easy.
Nothing's easy.
It was easy taking the first two papers, but I also kinda agree with the Planning Board that it should stay with the Board of Appeals and not come here. So, that's what makes it difficult. So, if you're against one paper in favor of the other two, it creates a problem. So, am I supposed to vote no because I don't like one section of it?
Yep.
Doesn't seem like it's right.
Which one is more, do you?
Well, it could be separated.
Yeah, but the administrative ones are-
Yeah, the administrative ones are, ah, what they are, but if I vote no because I don't like the third part, then actually it's a no against the first two, simple administrative papers.
Right.
And I think the Planning Board voted not to, on third section, to send it to City Council, and that was probably to keep the politics out of it.
Correct.
So.
Counselor McDonald. Did your light go on? Yes, it did, you're good.
I thought we were getting close to someplace, but now it feels like we're not. And I feel like if we, I don't know what the rules are about combining papers that have been, that were previously separated, we just had a whole determination that these papers, this had been separated into three papers, right? And so, are we allowed to simply combine them? And if that is the case, I would like to ask that they be separated into two papers. One, that would be the motion to approve the, the parts that we already approved and separate that out from the last one. And I, I feel like we already tried to approve the, the pieces that we approved, so I would like to approve the administrative pieces. Are we allowed to combine motions? I know we can split them, but can we combine them?
Yes.
So, the question is, can you, can you combine, can you separate? Well, from what I recall, the original paper has everything combined already. You only separated them for the purposes of voting. So, what's the question? Well, we, we just moved to reconsider, we very clearly clarified that we're only moving to reconsider because we can't move to reconsider a portion of an item that didn't pass because there's no prevailing side. So we clearly did not move to reconsider that, we moved to reconsider the dimensional controls and the parking requirements, so I thought that's where we were. But now it sounds like we're talking about all of them, but I, I didn't think we could reconsider those things. So in order to pull those together, we would have to combine them. So, is a single councilor allowed to combine all those things together, or do we need to take a vote? Because I know we just said a single councilor can split things for the purpose of the vote.
So, it sounds like to me what's happening is, the last meeting, you separated the items
for the vote. Right, we've established that.
In this, in this meeting, I understand Counselor Crowe made a motion to not separate them and just reconsider and vote on them all at once, right?
Yep.
Counselor Crowe.
Only because they are one paper. They are one paper, so we didn't split it into three separate papers, we just took pieces of one paper and said, yes to this, yes to this, no to this. So it's still one paper.
It is. But how you vote on it, you know, you have discretion as to how you wanna vote on it, you can separate them like you did last time, or they're already combined and you can vote on them all at once.
Well, we- Counselor Crowe, do you have something you might wanna?
The, not sure-
I have it on, don't I?
Which way to go? I'm fine if we, um-
Crowe, hold on, there you go.
Sorry, I'm fine if we do have sort of a compromise and we vote on the first two and either the other one dies and we take it up in six months, or we figure out some other path. Because I'm, I, I still believe that buffer zones fall under the purview of the Board of Appeals and it's not a dimensional control, so.
Okay, I got a point of information by Counselor Simonelli. Is Counselor Simonelli hit your button, please?
You, Madam President.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you. My point of information is I would agree with Counselor Crowe. I think that's the best way to go on a compromise, is vote those two papers out and the third paper, we table it up and we take it up in six months from now. I'd be willing to do that because honestly, it's the third portion of the, of the paper, like Counselor Condon was saying earlier, that I'm concerned with. I wasn't here to vote on it, but, you know, that's the piece of it that, like I said already, I'm kinda on the fence with. So I'd like to have more discussion about that and, you know, put out the reasons why I think that, you know, things should change, things should change. So, I, but I would be willing to compromise with that, I think that's fair, you know, to move, to move this night forward, absolutely. I mean, six months isn't bad compromise, it's better than two years. I mean, right? It was either two years or six months. So I don't think, I think six months is, and then six months if we decide we don't wanna have it for two years, then we decide that then, you know? I mean, I'd be willing to do that, because I'm, I don't know, I'm still not really, I still haven't made up my mind on that third piece, and now that it's kinda broken in sections, it's almost like, you know, I, I'm okay with the first two, but the third one, I don't even get to get a vote on it, you know? Kinda going in it, not happy. That would be my compromise.
Counselor Seega.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna go on the record to say that I disagree with Counselor O'Malley, shocker, that we are violating an open meeting law for the simple fact that the only public speaker that we had this evening spoke on 315, the third piece, and the people that are in this audience are only here for the third piece of Paper 315-22. So if this wasn't properly docketed on our agenda, then how did the public know to come to this meeting and speak a public comment? So I disagree that we are violating an open meeting law. The paper is clearly posted on this agenda, whether it's underneath the reconsideration or not, it's there. It's no longer listed as a table paper and the public knew to come to this meeting to voice their concerns about it. So I disagree that we are in an open meeting law violation, and I would like to move the motion unless Counselor Crowe's going to withdraw it, to vote on this paper this evening. It's not going to change, no matter how many times we sit up here and spend hours upon hours upon hours. Eight votes need to be had to have this paper pass. It's not going to pass, it's not even gonna pass in six months, so why are we kicking it down the candle?
I agree, I just say move the paper.
Okay, so Counselor Linehan is next.
I was gonna move that we table the third section and vote the first two.
That's cool.
All right, Counselor Winslow, you've, and Counselor Hayes, you're pretty good. Okay, so we have a, we have a-
Thank you.
So I'm on the, I have the, I think I have the floor now.
Yeah, table takes precedent, table wins.
Counsel Linehan made the table. Okay, Counselor Linehan, would you please, would you please repeat what you just said?
My desire is to table the third section, that's problematic for all of us, and to take up the vote on the first two.
Okay, and could someone, Ms. Cagno? Could you please find Counselor O'Malley? Okay, Counsel-
I'm not disagreeing that it's properly before us, we did take up public comment on it, and we reconsidered it, and now we're doing, we're talking about the paper.
Okay, we're gonna vote, we're gonna vote. Huh? Okay, so, let's just figure this out, because I wanna make sure we get the steps correctly. Okay, well, we're trying to vote on the first two. Oh, is he going? Okay, all right. Okay. We're gonna get like a candle that burns in here, it just kinda gives serenity. All right. So, once again, for the record, motion to-
To table the third section.
Motion to table the third section, okay, by Counselor Linehan, seconded by Counselor Winslow, okay? Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Linehan?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
O'Malley? Seega?
No.
Simonelli?
Yes.
Winslow?
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes. Okay.
Paper's tabled.
Okay, so the paper is-
Part three.
Part three is tabled. Let's go with reconsideration on part one. Okay, so let's see where we are with this one. We need a motion to enroll, but I wanna at least get the correct wording here. Okay, Counselor Crowe.
So, I make a motion that we enroll the sections of Paper 315-22, Section 12.12.190A and 12.12.190B, only regarding dimensional controls and parking requirements.
So that is Section 1 and Section 2, correct? Ms. Romero? That is Section 1 and Section 2. We're going to enroll Paper 315-22, Section 12.12.190A and 12.12.190B. Only regarding dimensional controls and parking requirements. Okay, and that, that takes care of both Section 1 and Section 2? One and two, that's, I just wanted, wanted to make sure we've got that right. Right, okay, so- Okay, all right, so, we've got this, we have a motion, do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Simonelli, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Linehan?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
O'Malley? Seega?
Yes.
Simonelli? Winslow? Spatafora? Murphy?
Yes. Paper is enrolled. Okay. Yes. Are you serious?
I'm serious.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Counselor Winslow, seconded by Counselor Crowe to, and let's read it, Counselor Crowe, or Counselor Winslow, read it, what do we want to ordain? Very specific for the record, oh, suspend the rules, I'm sorry, so suspend the rules. The clerk will call the roll, sorry, thank you, Counsel Winslow.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Linehan?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Seega?
Yes.
Simonelli?
Yes.
Winslow?
Yes.
Spatafora?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Okay. Rules have been suspended.
Okay, be very, be very specific and read it exactly. What, I don't know why you're not, there you go, you're lighting up.
Motion to ordain sections, section, I mean, no, Paper 315-22, Section 12.12.190A regarding new construction and 12.12.190B, only regarding dimensional controls and parking requirements.
Ms. Romero, yes? Okay. Clerk will call the roll, seconded by Counselor Winslow, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Linehan?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Uh, Seega?
Yes.
Simonelli?
Yes.
Winslow?
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora? Murphy?
Yes.
Okay.
Next order of business. Docket is clear. Do we have any personal privilege? Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, just Happy New Year to everybody, and I know this Saturday at 3 o'clock, UMA is having a mapping, community mapping event at the Dean Center, Senior Center, so at, from, at 3 o'clock, so it just sounded like an interesting event to feature. Thanks, take care.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say thank you for all the people that came down for the Lincoln Tree lighting ceremony, I haven't seen most of you since then because I got the wounded neck and, but it was a great time, a lot of people came out and had a, had a great time with their families, so it looks like we're gonna be doing that every year now, everyone seemed to like it. So I wanna thank all the volunteers that came down and helped out, you know, we couldn't have done it without everybody coming down and giving a helping hand. And I just wanna say Happy New Year to everybody, and I'm excited for you, Council Presidents, I think we're gonna have a wonderful year this year, I, you know, I like the way you run meetings and compromise, so I think we're in for a good year because you get a lot of good things done, so I'm looking forward to it, and I think you did a wonderful job tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald.
I am excited to announce that on February 1st, in the City Council chambers, at 6:00 PM, we'll be having the first in our language-based Town Hall series, and this will be in Chinese. I have a flyer that's also in simplified Chinese that we'll be distributing. The meeting will be conducted in Cantonese as well as Mandarin, using live interpretation as well as some of the headsets that we have. And the, the goal is to have a series of these meetings that allow people to get to know City Hall, learn about the new language access resources that our language access coordinator, Elena Martinez, has been putting in place. And so, we started this work on the Intercultural Committee, Counselor Cologne Hayes has been assisting as well, and we're, but we're moving ahead to make sure that folks in their native language do get access to the resources at City Hall. So if this goes well, we'll try some more languages, but we're starting off with Chinese on February 1st, 6:00 PM, in City Hall, we'll be providing refreshments as well as childcare and homework space so that families can attend, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald, Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you, Counsel President. Want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I know that we won't be on TV next week, so wishing everyone a contemplative Martin Luther King Junior Day. Jr. Day, it's very important to kind of consider his, his, his message and how that is relevant still today, I would like to thank Council President Murphy for a well-run and fair meeting, it really means a lot to me, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley, I am actually trying to find something, if anyone can help me find it, that would be great, because I just want to give the audience, the television audience, a little bit of information, or at least know that it's coming up, and unfortunately, I don't have the date with me, as you all know, we're having kind of an influx of four-legged friends with teals who seem to be roaming our neighborhood, i.e. called coyotes, they seem to be in every ward, we have an inordinate amount of them in Ward 5, roaming Bowers Ave and walking down Bainbridge Street, et cetera, and they're quite healthy-looking and quite happy in their environment, it looks like, so, and they're probably going to reproduce this spring, pardon me? They're not endangered, but you can't, like, you know, you really can't... Shoot them, um, but, you gotta, you gotta leave them alone, but, but, uh... But anyway, I just want to let the general public know a couple of things, number one, please do not feed them, that's really when coyotes have a problem, is when you, you or your neighbors start feeding them, because then they begin to expect it, and they, they come into the neighborhood even more often, please keep your garbage, they, they will go into anything that they can, so please keep your garbage secured, and there is a meeting coming up in January, I believe it's the end of January, it's, the thank you for whoever just found it, January 26th, 6 o'clock, here at City Hall, our ACO will be here along with a number of wildlife organizations that will just really kind of, you know, tell you about the coyote, how to, not interact with them, but to live with them without trouble, so we would hope that people would come down and listen to the experts on the coyotes, if you're walking through the Forest Hill Cemetery, they're predominantly there, there are signs on the cemetery gates now saying that there is wildlife in there, I have been walking in Heine Banks, Blueberry Hill in the cemetery for close to 30 years, they've always been there, there's never been any issue with them, so, I did tell Mr. Rosa that I thought the picture of the coyotes, the coyote looked mean, and I've never seen mean-looking coyotes, they look quite friendly, even when they sit there and stare at you, but, you know, it, it really would be to the benefit of everybody to learn about them so that we do know how to live with them peacefully, mating season is coming up now, pups are usually born in April, so that's another thing for walkers and joggers to be aware of, so we really want to get the information out about them, we hope you join us on January 26th, here at City Hall chambers at 6 o'clock, to, to learn more about our, our neighbor, our four-legged neighbors, thank you. And I see no other lights, so I will take a motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn from Counselor O'Malley, seconded by Counselor McDonald, good night, everybody, we'll see you next week. Thank you.